Keeping you informed of events in your community.
I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Downing here. Mayor Pro Tem Dodge here. Councilmember Snetsinger here. Councilmember Malika.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown will be absent. Councilmember Whitman here. Councilmember Escabel.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or deletions from council? Hearing done, we will move to interviews for the planning commission. Ms. Del Fonsor? Hi, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good. Could you kind of tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to join the planning commission?
Sure. Well, thank you very much for having me. I work full-time at Good Samaritan Medical Center in Lafayette as a financial analyst. And I have a hard time getting involved with the community, which I would like to do. And so the planning commission seems like an appropriate outlet. And vacancy became available, so I thought I would pursue it.
Okay. I noticed on the application you had marked off a couple other commissions. Is this planning commission a preference that you wish to be interviewing for?
Yeah, that's the only opportunity I saw that was available at this point. So I think so, based on availability.
Great. Any other questions?
Was there anything in particular that prompted your interest to volunteer?
You know, I've been looking at the newsletter really just for opportunities where I could volunteer either evenings or weekends. And so it was just availability that made me think I ought to pursue this.
Well, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Kim? What's your interest specifically in the planning commission? And then do you have ideas that you're wanting to bring to the commission? Or just tell us a little bit more about what your interest is in effect committee?
Sure. So no particular ideas that I want to bring forth, except representation from also my generation and looking forward to what Northland is going to do and represent here in the future. My specific interest with the committee is I do want to explore the possibility of serving the community in a form of government. And so again, recognizing that this is a good opportunity for me to explore now.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your interest.
Have a good night.
Next on the agenda, we have three proclamations. So I will go down and then those. National Volunteer Week. We have Myrna, Chris Wall, and Maxine Foster. Would you like to come forward? No. Do you want to sit there? It's okay. Come on up, come on up. You can do whatever you want. Maxine and Myrna have volunteered for the courts for several years now. And how many hours? At least 300 hours. About 10 years? Has it been 10 years? At least 10.
'04 or '05.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much. And I know, I know you put in a lot of hours. But I have seen you in there working very hard. So thank you so much. And thank you for coming to accept this proclamation. And this is for National Volunteer Recognition Week, whereas our nation's heritage is based on citizen involvement and citizen participation. And volunteerism directly reflects the democratic principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas voluntary effort in the city of Northland provides an opportunity for youth and adults to share skills and expertise with their community and make Northland a more desirable, beautiful, and safer community in which to live, work, and play. And whereas residents who volunteer their time provide a spirit of helping that multiplies in value when each person reaches out to assist another. And whereas the city of Northland has over 800 volunteers who provide approximately 10,000 hours of service each year to city programs. Amazing. It really is. It's wonderful. And projects such as Parks and Trail Partners, Snowstormers, Neighborhood Beautification Program, Bike Donation Program, Boards and Commissions, and two city departments, including the Police Department and Municipal Court. And whereas numerous individuals have selflessly volunteered years of service, showing exemplary dedication to programs and projects within the community that benefit children, students, senior citizens, families, and organizations. And whereas the city council wishes to honor and extend our deepest gratitude to the dedicated residents of this community who give so freely of their valuable time, energy, and abilities. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through the 16th, 2016, as National Volunteer Recognition Week in the city of Northland and urge all residents and employees to join in recognizing the invaluable work that volunteers perform in our community, dated at Northland, Colorado, this 11th day of April, 2016. Thank you so much for all you do both of you. Would you either one of you or both of you want to say something? I don't know. You? Yes. All right.
We hope we don't get replaced by a computer.
Oh, I don't think so. Some computers don't file very well. We file. Computers don't require filing. Oh, okay. Thank you ladies. Thank you very much. For all you do. Amen. All right. Next, we have Vanessa. We have Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness. How are you? This is very, very important. So this is concerning Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Northland recognizes that child abuse neglect is a serious and an ongoing problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas the effects of child abuse neglect are felt by whole communities, and communities must make every effort to end the abuse through awareness and action and promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs, such as the Ralston House Child Advocacy Center, succeed because of meaningful connections and partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, health community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas the Ralston House's mission, to stop the abuse and to start the healing, is essential to preventing abuse and promoting the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and neglect and contribute to promote the well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and marriage-friendly environment. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2016, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the city of Northland and urge all residents to join together to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse and neglect during the month of April and continuing throughout the year, dated at Northland, Colorado, this 11th day of April, 2016.
Thank you, Mayor.
I can't think this is enough. Normally, I would bring pinholes for you all, but we're actually plumb at pinholes because we've done so amazing in Adams County this year to really promote this campaign. On Wednesday this week, the 13th, we're actually going to be planting our last March garden to represent the 1,101 children Ralston House served last year. So those pinholes will go on the ground at Northland High School on Wednesday. It's just a representation of continuing to help those kids that are no longer victims now, and they are survivors. They've been able to tell their story because the city of Northland has provided such an amazing service to these kids and their families. So really, thank you to you guys because this is what makes it happen, is that partnership with a city like you. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Is there anyone here who could have received the housing? I will read it. There's not. Okay. This is concerning fair housing law. Whereas April 2016 marks the 40th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act, title aid of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended. And whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout Northland in the United States of America should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, gender, age, sexual orientation, familial status, or disability. And whereas equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and city. And whereas the state of Colorado, which enacted prohibitions against housing discrimination in 1959, was the first state in the nation to pass anti-discrimination laws pertaining to private property, recognizing and affirming that all persons in the state of Colorado are free to purchase, rent, finance, and insure their homes without regard to their race, color, religion, gender, national origin, familial status, disability, or source of income. And whereas the city of Northland affirmatively supports the efforts of the federal government and the state of Colorado to assure equal access to all Americans to rental housing and home ownership opportunities. And whereas the city of Northland welcomes this opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to the principle of fair housing for all and are committed to efforts that address discrimination in our communities, support all programs that will educate the public about their rights to equal housing, and to assure every person their right to the freedom fear of housing discrimination. Now therefore, I Joyce Downing, Mayor of the City of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2016, as fair housing month in the city of Northland and encourage all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in the city of Northland to abide by the letter and the spirit of the fair housing law, dated at Northland, Colorado, this 11th day of April, 2016. Next on the agenda, we have presentations. Economic Development, Ryan.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm planning for debut title this month and wanted to give you a report on how the last month went. And for the month of March, there were a total of 10 new storefront businesses that opened, bringing a total of 30 new employees to Northland and absorbing a total of 18,603 square feet. There were also additionally three home-based businesses that opened. And for the first quarter 2016, four businesses closed with a total of 4,800 square feet and seven employees. But for the total of first quarter 2016, we have a positive net gain of 29 new businesses, with 54, 398 square feet and 61 employees gained for the first quarter of 2016. And also an update from the last NERA meeting. At the last NERA meeting, the Huron Center was discussed regarding the storm water drainage studies being done by Kimberly Horn. They presented essentially three different alternatives, varying in scope from onsite detention to larger and more of a regional approach to the stormwater problems around the Huron Center. After the meeting, the information was passed on to Public Works to review as well, since they didn't see before the meeting. And Kimberly Horn sent a give back to NERA with an estimate of costs for all three different scenarios. And that was it for the last month.
All right, thank you. Questions? Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public invited to be heard. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Would you like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Myrna? Maxine? I don't think so. So we'll move on the agenda to the financial report. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Jason Loveland, Finance Director. This is a first financial report for 2016. This goes through February. I'll start with the sales and use tax update on the executive summary. I reported a pretty flat sales and use tax so far through the year. I've broken it out into some more detail for just information purposes. It's always hard on the first couple of months of the year to view the timing on remittances or if there was anything odd from the prior year. I noticed that there were several entities, businesses last year, have reported two returns for a single month at this point. Just some year-end timing from their standpoint and then on ours as well. Anyway, sales tax itself is actually down about 2.6 percent, with food tax being up 6 percent, and then use tax being up 22 percent for the year. I don't think that any of these numbers are too indicative of what we forecast out for the rest of the year, basically due to the timing that happens in January and February, with year ends from one year to the next. Overall, the economy nationwide is expected to see a little bit slower growth in retail and food sales. And we would probably expect to see similar things happen here in Northland for the year. So I think they were estimating down from 4.6 percent to about 3.9 percent for the year. So we'll see if the nationwide trends and experts, if their estimates play out here in Northland. So we'll follow that as we move forward in the year. In the general fund, on page 2 of the report, total taxes are at $1.2 million as compared to $1.1 the previous year, which is up about 12 percent in total. You'll see total revenues are at $1.9 million versus $1.7 for the year. The collection rate is at 7.8 percent as compared to budget. And last year was at 7.6 percent. Revenue-wise, we're on track in the first two months of the year regarding the general fund. I think the only thing to note on this is on the use tax side, that's up 42 percent. And that's actually just due to building construction use tax pulled at 114th and Irma. Other than that, as you can see, the percent difference year over year are relatively the same in the general fund. Expenditures in the general fund, you have it broken down by department. You'll see totals just over $3 million for the year, about 3.2 million in total spending for the general fund. Again, percent difference year over year, and the collection rates are in line. Overall, you'll notice that Public Works' spending is down 30 percent. I assure you that's not because David doesn't want to spend any money. But it's just the timing of the utility accrual and then a vehicle purchase that had been made last year versus not having one this year. So I'm sure we'll catch up with Public Works. So is there any questions on the general fund? It's pretty early in the year to see any trending, but things look like we're in order, general fund bias.
I don't think so.
Okay. The Water and Wastewater Funds, total revenues are just at $1.2 million with total expenditures of $1.4 million. Again, you'll see down below, water usage and sewage usage are up around 4 percent each. As you know, we do winter averaging for sewer use for November through February. We've done that calculation and the average has actually dropped from 5,000 gallons to 4,000 gallons for the year. So we're seeing conservation. And we've seen conservation through the winter months, which has led to, you know, usage for that sewer calculation. If you don't have usage throughout the year to set your own rate, it'll be based on 4,000 gallons rather than 5, which has been for the last several years. And as I said, food tax was up 6 percent, which gets recorded in the Water and Wastewater Fund. I'll move on to the non-major enterprise funds, which first is the Stormwater Fund. Total operating revenues of $44,000 and total expenditures of $29,000. Collection and spending rates are in line with cash performance. So there's not much to report in the Stormwater Fund so far this year. And then the Sanitation Funds, total operating revenues of $160,000 and total expenditures of $186,000. Again, we're seeing consistency. You'll see that recycling revenue year over year has dropped 73 percent. I think that's something that we've been seeing for the last year. And obviously, in the first couple of months of 2016, that continues. I think on the cash reserves, unless anybody had any questions on any of the funds.
Any questions?
Which face briefly?
I don't see any.
Okay. So cash investments totaled $50.8 million through February, which is up slightly from about 48 from the same time of the last year. With that, I will...
All right. Is there any questions on the financial report at all? Thank you very much for coming to the seat. Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-up vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is the public hearing.
This is on CB 1864, a bill for a special ordinance amending the 2016 budget, recognizing revenues and appropriating expenditures by supplemental appropriation for the payment of the costs and expenses of the municipal government, agencies, and offices of the City of Northland, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on CB 1864. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB 1864? Is there anyone here that wants to speak either for or against CB 1864? Seeing no one approach, we'll close that public hearing and we'll move to organize the second reading, which is the same. And I don't think we need to read the title. So I need a motion, please. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. David, did you want to add anything?
No. Mayor, council, this is the second reading from two weeks ago to carry over CIP project civil grant awards, council travel.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done. Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
A close-up vote, and CB 1864 on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is resolutions, CR 46.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to issue purchase orders for a total amount not to exceed $69,708 for the purchase of city vehicles and equipment.
Move to approve.
Second.
David?
Yeah, council members, this is from the Parks Capital Equipment. There are two, one more here for a total of $34,613 and a replacement truck for $35,095. And there was $88,000 appropriated for these two pieces of equipment.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done. Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
A close-up vote, and CR 46 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 47.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property to the state of Colorado for the use and benefit of the Colorado Department of Transportation in the amount of $282,620, and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents to complete the transaction.
Move to approve.
Second. Council members, unfortunately, I wasn't here for the study session when this came up, but I understand there were some questions on the legal language to convey the title and on the sign. We did have a very nice meeting today. I wasn't there on the CDOT meeting and nor were Brooke and myself. But Cory was there and has some good news as far as the language and the sign.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer any specific questions council may have from last week's study session, but ultimately, this morning, CDOT agreed to concerns that certainly I had in terms of how the city would be able to convey title when we really didn't have any information about what we owned. Typically, when a governing, when a condemning authority like CDOT comes through and condemns property, they get title work. They show what you own. They provided that information, which allows us now to draft the appropriate documents. There was also concern about, they were treating us like private property owners as opposed to the government in terms of some of the documents. They agreed to resolve the language and revise it appropriately. And then lastly, with the issue of the sign, which is, I understand it was the most important issue discussed last week from council's perspective about making sure that the city was getting full value for the sign. CDOT's policies and what are known as the Uniform Relocation Policies prevent them from providing the city with what's called betterment. So in other words, the city can't get more money than the sign ultimately would be worth or the cost of relocating it. But what CDOT agreed is to essentially do, put out to bid both the cost of demoing, which they've already done, and then the cost of relocating. And then that dollar amount the city can use towards the sign, whether it is the sign that exists today and being relocated or whether the city needs a new sign. Either way, the dollars can be used towards that sign.
Great. That's good news. You've pretty much covered, I think, our question.
I hope so.
Are there any other questions, though?
So basically, there's paying for the installation.
And the demolition.
And the demolition. Which they are, you said they already did that.
They have bids. And so they, we will actually do the work, but they will pay for it.
Was there any discussion on what type of sign is going to be able to be replaced? Can it, I know that that's been a discussion in the past about it having, being a marquee sign.
As I understand it, the city doesn't know yet what the new sign is going to look like. So that's why the idea of getting the amount for the installation of essentially this sign is dollars that can be used towards whatever the sign may be in the future. Based on, you know, there's a couple of wild cards. For example, there's not a given location yet. The location, when you're talking about linear footage of, for example, extending electricity, there's going to be some back and forth on what those dollars are. But it's not, it doesn't have to be a specific type of sign.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
A close-up vote, and CR 47 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now recess the regular city council meeting and bring to order the marijuana licensing board. Joanna, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snetsinger?
Here.
Councilmember Malika?
Here.
Councilmember Sowers?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown is absent. Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Escabel?
Here.
Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes from March 14, 2016.
Move to second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Okay. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Please vote. Okay, so I'll close that vote, and the motion to approve the minutes of the March 14, 2016 meeting passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Escabal.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the request to continue public hearing on a new license application. Washington Point Management LLC doing business as Growhouse Northland. So I need, do I need a motion? Okay. Sarah?
Well, do we have to read the verbatim?
It is just a motion.
Is it just to?
To continue that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a motion to continue the hearing on the new license to June 27, 2016.
Okay, just, you want to discuss or tell us a little, anything else other than why they?
You have a request in your pack, and I think they gave some detail in terms of...
Right.
I just find it interesting that they have no representation here.
Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and the motion to grant the applicant's request to continue the hearing on the application filed by Washington Point Management LLC doing business as Growhouse Northland to June 27, 2016, passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Escabal.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the marijuana licensing board and reconvene the regular council meeting, and we have communications, and I'll start with Antonio.
All right, thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay.
Go. Okay. So I would just like to say, next Monday, our new city manager, Jim Hayes, comes in, and I'm very excited. I think it's going to be a great time for Northland as a city, so I just want to remind everybody that Monday, we get a new city manager. I'd like to update you on a few items that the Youth Commission's been working on. They are definitely partnering with Brothers Redevelopment on the Paint-a-thon again this year, so I think they are still taking applications for houses that need painting. So if anybody knows of anybody, maybe let me know, and I can get it to the right person, but it's definitely for people who are disabled or just cannot do the job of repainting their house, and it really needs it. So that will be happening in June. They are working on planning a field day for summer day camp this year. They kind of brought this up as a community volunteerism, you know, outreach for them. They're going to work with the kids, they're going to, they've planned all the events for a full day of daycare outside. So it's like all fun stuff, all water activities, because it'll be in June. And they've scheduled it themselves, they've chosen the events by themselves, they've met with the rec staff to coordinate everything, so it's a really good volunteer opportunity for them, and I'm glad that they're doing this also. And then they are electing new officers in May, so it might change up a little bit, or it might not change up at all. They are also going to do a mayor-on-move, or they're going to try to do a mayor-on-move since all of them got rained out last year. This year, they will try again in June, so hopefully they have better luck. And then, just a little update on some things with the NHF. They spent some time planning the upcoming Sculpture Garden dedication. That's on June 10. It will be a combination of a Sculpture Garden dedication and the Ardon Parade unveiling. It's going to be a really nice event. It's going to be wine and cheese, and they're going to have a string quartet from the Northland High School. So, Margot, you're out there. I'm wondering, is the link open for reservations? Because you're supposed to make a, it is, okay, so you can go on our website and get there? Okay. So if you would like to attend, please go to the website and look for the reservation, and they just want a head count, which is why they'd like you to reserve ahead of time. But it should be very nice. And one fun statistic, well, it's not really a fun statistic, it's just interesting. Michael Stricker mentioned that they're definitely having a lack of rehearsal space in the rec center. That last year, the total rentals for the entire year were at $32,000, and this year to the quarter, they're at $35,000. So they're really running out of rooms to rent. So it's just something to keep in mind when we're considering things that need to be worked on in the future. So that's it for me.
All right, thank you. This past weekend, I did receive a recognition for the city from Northland, Colorado, and I'll just read it to you, and then I'll leave it with Joanna for the, to leave in their, wherever they want to put it. Anyway, "Northland Corral extends its profound appreciation to the City of Northland in recognition of our 40-year partnership in bringing entertainment to the Northland community, April 9, 2016." So they were very excited with the partnership. It was over 40 years that they've been entertaining in Northland. So that was, it was a privilege to accept that on behalf of Northland. So with that, do you have anything? Okay.
Just a reminder, tomorrow night here at the Northland Rec Center, they're going to have the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life kickoff from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Whether you want to be a part of a team or have your own team, just come, it's fun to come out and see what they're working on. And I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Joanna?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All righty.
Just one thing, Council members, in relation to the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, I just want to say that we had quite a few architects here proposing on the Ralston House, and we're expecting bids back a week from this Tuesday and that, so to do the construction documents.
That's really exciting. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Cory?
Just a couple of follow-up items from the last meeting. I did provide Council via email some information from our lobbyists. If there's any additional information you need, by all means, let me know. And then today, I provided you with the litigation update. It took a little longer than I anticipated, because we actually had meetings over the last week or so on two of the pending cases, and I wanted to get you as much up-to-date info as I could. So you have those things, and if you have any, need any additional information, let me know.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Public Invited to Be Heard. You can speak to us for three minutes.
The two victims are still there.
The two victims are here. Okay? I think they're running up the back door. I'm not sure. All right.
To do the construction documents.
That's really exciting. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Cory?
Just a couple of follow-up items from the last meeting. I did provide Council via email some information from our lobbyists. If there's any additional information you need, by all means, let me know. And then today, I provided you with the litigation update. It took a little longer than I anticipated, because we actually had meetings over the last week or so on two of the pending cases, and I wanted to get you as much up-to-date info as I could. So you have those things, and if you have any, need any additional information, let me know.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Public Invited to Be Heard. You can speak to us for three minutes.
The two victims are still there.
The two victims are here. Okay? I think they're running up the back door. I'm not sure. All right. Seeing no one approach us, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.